Okay.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the April 19th City Council Meeting for the City of Cannon Falls to order. Can we have a rule call, please? Bringle.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
Gesby.
Here.
Kronenberger.
Here.
Lindell.
Here.
Montgomery.
Here.
Althoff.
Here.
Would you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we've got one addition to the council, to the agenda on the council business. We're going to add Item C, which is a Park Street mill and overlay. Does the council have any other corrections or additions to the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Motion by Gesby, a second by Montgomery, to approve the agenda with that one addition. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Okay, public input. Public input is intended to afford the public an opportunity to address concerns of the city council. The public input will be no longer than 30 minutes in total length, and each speaker will have no more than three minutes to speak. Speakers may address topics relevant to the government of the city. Speakers must sign up in advance and must provide their name, address, and the topic they intend to address. Comments must be on topic, respectful, pertinent to city business, and adhere to the applicable data privacy rules. Any speaker that violates these rules will be asked to sit down, and if the speaker refuses to comply, they may be removed from the meeting. Speakers shall not address topics that are a subject of a public hearing. All such comments shall be made at the public hearing. The city council will not generally act on issues raised by the public input, but may choose to schedule a consideration of the item on a future agenda. Beeb.
Good evening. I haven't been up here to public input since it's changed, and I just have some questions and some concerns about public input itself. For some reason, it's not allowed at the Finance Committee or the Police Commission, and I'm wondering why that is or if that can be changed or rectified. I, since it's been changed, I believe it used to say something to the effect of no name-calling and no discussion about employees. And it apparently was replaced with, like, respectful, which is all good. It all fits. It's kind of the same program. But as we all know, that there were, there was a council member that called people stupid and un-American here at the council meeting, which was completely uncalled for. Another council member on a different social media referred to somebody as a stupid pigeon. And then another occasion, yet, an employee's work record was questioned, and in fact, he was told to, "Don't be a smart ass." And I mean, they printed everything in the paper, but they can't even print that, or they won't. And I'm just wondering why the rules aren't applied fairly and equally to all, because I don't see where the public has been a problem here. Not once. Maybe I missed something, but I haven't seen anybody in the public causing a ruckus here. I don't think that they've hauled anybody out. And then the other thing, last but not least, the data privacy rules. Is there somewhere where I can get a copy of this so that I know that I'm not in violation of that? Somewhere the rules, so I can see them and study them, because I don't understand them all. And I'd like to have a copy of those, so I know what I'm talking about, because I don't want to violate those. Thank you for your time.
Okay, anybody else public input? Are you going to talk about Bluff Drive?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we're going to, that's on the agenda, so we'll talk about that when we get to it, so. Anybody else other than Bluff Drive? Second and final, second call. Third and final call. Hearing none will close the public input. Okay, consent agenda. Bear with me, it's a long agenda. Consent agenda items may be adopted under one motion as presented or may be removed for discussion and resolution is council business. For you at home and in the audience, I'll go through the consent agenda. Item A, just incorrect claims for the accounting period ending April 13th, 2022. Item B, minute meetings for the April 5, 2022 city council meeting. Item C, approve the pool deck seam caulking. Item D, approve the hire of the 2022 pool employees. Item E, approve the ADA pool lift chair purchase. Item F, approve the surplus equipment sale. Item G, approve the purchase of a utility trailer for the Public Works Department. Item H, approve the purchase of an underground utility locator. Item I, approve the fence backstop upgrade at Archie Swenson Fields. Item J, Resolution 2625, accepting a monetary donation of $7,589.50 from the Cannon Falls Youth Athletics Organization to the Parks Department. Item K, approve the hire of Matthew Davison for the Fire Department. Item L, approve a MediaCom lease on the Lampkin, Lampkin Hill property. Item M, approve employee recognition, recognition education conference. And Item N, introduction and first reading of ordinance 382, amending Chapter 152 of the Cannon Falls City Code by rezoning certain property from UR Urban Reserve to B2 Highway Business District. Is there anything the council would like to pull down?
I want to pull down, sorry. I'd like to pull down Item A, just incorrect claims.
Okay, we'll put that under council business as Item 7D, just incorrect claims. Anyone else? I'm going to pull down Item M, approve employee recognition education conference. That'll go under council business, Item 7E. Anything else? Do I have a motion to accept, to approve the consent agenda minus Items A and M?
So moved.
Motion by Lindell, a second by Bringle, to approve the consent agenda excluding Items A and M. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Okay, council business. First item, Item A, approve and award the water tower painting bids. Bill, you want to take that?
We've got a, this is a good deal here, so.
Yes, Neil, any intro? All right, so we received bids, so on Wednesday, April 13th, council had previously approved plans and specifications, authorized advertisement for bids, and we have really good news. The good news is the painting world has not been impacted by supplier shortages, and actually, some of the delays in other projects has resulted in people looking for painting work, which is kind of the opposite of some other, other types of work. Also, we've got to be careful patting ourselves on the back too much, because bids can come in high on the next job, but we did make a few decisions that were, in hindsight, pretty good. One of them was there's a riser pipe, so there's a pipe that runs from the ground surface all the way to the top of the tank that previously, you know, several years ago, this was looked at, was included in all the cost estimates. Well, city staff, you know, that piping is covered by insulation. The assumption was it was in poor condition. Well, also, Dan and the staff, they, well, he pulled off the insulation and inspected the pipe and found it was actually in excellent condition, so we removed that from the project, saving some money. And some other minor items, you know, that we did, we, we think now in hindsight, save, you know, resulted in lower bids. So the end result is, when we look at bids, seven bids is really, a really good amount. That's a great competition. Also, when we look at bids, we want to make sure one person didn't really stand out, that they were several hundred thousand lower, meaning they may have interpreted the plans different than we did. So we had two, two bids pretty close together. Also, then we look at, you know, the statute says, well, we have to consider, are they a responsible bidder and how they bid? And then a couple of statutory requirements, responsive and responsible, and they fit that. And then lastly, we look at, well, have we ever worked with these people before? So we have not actually worked with Champion Tank Services, but we'd worked with Champion Coatings before, and that was a company that split off into two companies. So the people that worked for Champion Tank, we have worked with them before, and they're a very reputable company. So in that regard, we don't have a lot of discretion in that, but it does make us feel better that, you know, as we enter into a big contract here, we have a reasonable expectation of what we're going to get. So all that being said, after we're done and kind of think through all that, basically, the recommendation is to award the contract to Champion Tank Services for the amount of $418,000. So I don't know, Dan or Neil, if there's anything to add to that, or? Okay, so Mayor, if there's any questions or comments, or?
No, I'm pleased that it's almost half of what we were expecting, I think.
Yeah, it was really low.
It's, it's really a good deal.
It's good.
Council, any comments?
No.
I'm going to go ahead and make that a motion, if you're comfortable with the company as far as.
Yep. As comfortable as you can be, you know, so, yes.
Yeah, right.
Yes.
I'll make that a motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Gesby and a second by Bringle to approve and award the water tower painting bid. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Okay, Item B, Resolution 2626, approving the plans and specs and ordering advertiser bids for Bluff Drive. I know there's a few of you in the audience that maybe want to talk about the sidewalks, or was it, or something? Come on up.
Jason Alton, I live up on Cedar Hills, and I believe at the January meeting that we're all at, we agreed upon everything, and everything is good, and we were going to delay the sidewalks up on Bluff Drive. And then recently, we got a letter stating that if we delayed the sidewalks, then only the north side, the lots on the north side, would be responsible for putting those in, and it wouldn't be divided up the 15 ways. So I guess if that's the case, we're all in agreeance of, you know, like, if it has to be now to put them in, to divide it up the 15 ways, if it can't be assessed later, then, you know, ultimately, we would just like to add that back into it, so that it's split the 15 ways and not seven or eight, whatever it adds up to be.
As it probably should be.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's only fair that both sides pay for the sidewalk rather than one side.
So back when we had this previous discussion, though, you know, the damage done while construction is going on.
Well, I mean, ultimately, I think everybody would rather not have them, but if the, if the future outlook of doing that is, I guess you guys, you know, this side of the street's going to pay for it, then we would just have to deal with them. You know, be careful, deal with them, whatever, what have you.
Okay.
Goes on all the time, so.
I mean, it's not like it's impossible, it's just, it's maybe not ideal, but it's feasible.
If it's delayed, why can't it be divided by the 15? Why does it only have to be the north if it's delayed? I guess I'm not following why it can't be divided by the 15.
Well.
Just because it's delayed.
It wouldn't be part of the project, correct?
It would be a single, a single project, so it would be a lot more expensive, and I think.
So it could be a future single project divided by 15. Why did, I guess I'm not understanding why.
Well, we were under the assumption in January that it was happening later, and it would be divided by the 15 lots on the street. That's, that's how we all left it, and then when we got the letter, it's like, well, no, it's, it's just the north side that would be paying for it.
Good question.
Yeah.
Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
So the discussions that Neil and I have had in the correspondence with the city attorney, one of the things, the challenging part is, there has to be an event that would trigger that. You know, typically, it's a building permit or an agreement, and it's, it's not impossible, but it's difficult to have an agreement with the people on the south side when it's not their property. You know, it's not, the sidewalk's not being built on their property. So the most straightforward is, the agreement would need to be with the person that owns the property where the sidewalk would be. Now, we did not ask the city attorney for the specific variation, but that's generally my understanding of that, that that's hard to do.
Oh, I guess I'm not understanding something.
You're not clear either.
So meaning that the sidewalk is on the north side, so, so there's, would be an agreement with all seven properties on the north side, saying that you have 10 years to build it, or if you build your house, I think is how it read, Neil, and then that's triggered by a building permit. Well, if you live on the south side, there's no building permit, there's no nothing. What do we bind the south side to? You know, what, what do we bind them to?
Oh, so you're saying that because this would be a street and sidewalk project, that you could bring in those other homeowners without?
We could bring them in because of the assessment process, but once the assessment process is done, what's the, you know, what legal mechanism do you have to do that if it's not built on their property?
I understand.
Does that make sense? Okay, I hope I'm explaining that halfway decent, Neil, so.
It's complicated, I, I think I understand, yeah.
One of the other things is, we would have to go through another complete assessment project, which the engineering got to do a set of plans and go through this whole thing again for a minimal amount of sidewalk work. They'd be saving 50%, but I don't know what engineering and administration would cost to make up for that.
Yeah.
You know, it's, because it's an expensive project to do it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that, I'm sorry, Neil, that is the other way to do it, would be doing another assessment process at that time. But you're right, on, on small items, you know, sorry, relatively speaking, small items, you know, all these hearings, all this stuff, time, effort, you know, you have to prepare a report, all these different things. It just takes a lot, as Neil mentioned, and you have to have full engineering plans to do an assessment project.
Okay.
You know, Bill, you would have no problem with changing the specifications before it goes out to bid if we include the sidewalk?
That would, we could do that, yes.
Not hard, okay.
If the council decided to do that, and maybe I'm jumping the gun, Neil, but we would just have you modify the advertisement for bids that you're going to approve tonight. You would, and I think Neil has given an alternate version, that you would just approve a modified version of that. If you so choose.
Well, it sounds like that's what they're asking for.
Yeah. Is that clear as mud, Jason?
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, yeah, to, for both sides to fairly pay for it, yeah.
The other people, you said the other people in that area are okay doing this now?
Yeah, like, when we left in January, we were assuming that that was going to be the case, whether it was a couple of years down the road or whatever, it always would have been split up amongst the 15, and I think that was kind of everybody's interpretation, but maybe not everybody's, but.
Bill?
One more item just to remember is that you will have to have a public, you know, another public hearing once the bids are opened. So you do have another time, you know, people can, they're going to be able to give their opinions again. Not that I want to encourage you to put it in and take it back out, put it back in, but you do have one more decision point. And that is after we actually receive bids.
Okay.
So in theory, you could pull that, you would have the choice to take that out at that point if, and do something different if you so choose.
Go ahead, Neil.
I think if we're going to decide one way or the other, it's best to put it back in there. At least we have a bid number.
Right.
To.
Oh, that makes sense.
To get to the final assessment hearing.
Yeah.
So if we change it at the final assessment hearing, that's fine, but we at least have a number.
No, that makes sense.
So.
I'm going to make a motion to put it out for bids with the modification that we're going to add the sidewalks in there?
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, a motion by Bringle and a second by Gesby to put out bids and ordering, and ordering advertisement for the Bluff Drive, including the modification of sidewalks.
Yes, including the modification, yes.
Would you mind approving that alternate bid advertisement also?
This one?
The one I just handed out.
Yes, well, yeah. So that motion includes this advertisement, approving the advertisement for bids as well.
And the advertisement for bids.
Okay. You, you're okay seconding that, too? Okay.
The only thing different is 712 feet of sidewalk on the, on the bid tab portion of it.
Okay.
Okay, is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Okay. Item C is an item we added. It's for the Park Street Mill and Overlay. Dan, you want to address that one?
Sure. This was brought under council business since Monday, we received the, the quote from Goodye County. And due to the timeline on the quote of five days, because of the volatility of the, of everything, we thought we'd bring this on to council early instead of through the commission meeting. So we put it under council business in case you had any questions regarding this project.
So you want to, you want us to act on it before the price goes down?
Yeah.
Is this something we can do with only having one bid?
This is the contractor that is doing the mill and overlay for the county.
Oh, they're already doing it, that's right.
One of the benefits of having the city be part of this project is, there's no mobilization cost, for one thing. Usually, when you have a mill and overlay project, there's usually a $5,000 mobilization cost as part of the project. So we're taking advantage of them being in town and doing the project. The equipment's all going to be in that area. We're not marring up each other's services by us doing our own separate project, so. And Billy, you got anything to add?
Oh, I think you covered it.
They're also doing the sidewalk, they're tearing out them steps by the park apartments. So we have to contribute, and you made that approval quite a while ago, to pay for our portion from the county line on up. And then there'll be some other handicap ramps that, on this project, that will get fixed, and it'll be all handicap accessible around that apartment building.
Project consists of those steps, and I'm sure everybody's familiar, it's those steps at the 4th and Park. Park Street's been complaining about those for years.
Oh, yeah.
And doing the one street from 4th up, Park Street from 4th to 3rd, to 2nd, whatever, that one, that one block there. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the Park Street Mill and Overlay project?
So moved. I'll second.
Motion by Gesby, a second by Duncan, to approve the Park Street Mill and Overlay project. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Okay, Item 7D, we were pulling down the just and correct claims.
Okay, just because I was going through this, and I, I just don't understand the, some of our lawyers' costs for data requests. In March, it was at 1,031.25, and from what I understand, that's, that's low and could be going higher, but we're averaging $1,000 a month on data requests. And I just, I just don't understand that little tidbit there, and plus, all the staff time involved in putting all those together, too. I think it's a unnecessary expense, or it's an expense that hopefully we could trim by quite a number. trim by quite a number. And it's twelve thousand dollars a year or more that we don't budget for, and it's got to come out of the general fund or whatever, and I just, I just don't think it's, it's worthy. But with that, I will make a motion to approve just and correct claims.
Second of that?
I'll second.
Motion by Gizmi and a second by Lundell to approve the just and correct claims. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I would just like to add to that, Steve mentioned the staff time, and so what Steve saw, or saw this month with a thousand plus, it's probably pretty close to double that when you throw in staff time.
Yeah, just a guess. And, and piggybacking on what you said, I don't, I don't know how we can, we can't really budget for it because we don't know what requests are going to come in. I think it's just something we should stay very aware of, of what it's costing the city, because it's a lot.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, I brought down item M, which is approving employee recognition, recognition education conference. That's a thing, bring up an awarding for performance for one of our employees. I think, Neil, you've got the figures there if you want to take that.
Yeah, this is kind of exciting. You know, Brenda's been working at the ambulance for forty-four years. That's exciting in itself that you can have a dedicated employee that works for the city that long. So through the, the American Ambulance Association, there's a conference out in Washington DC. She has been nominated as one in about a hundred and twenty across the United States to be recognized with her over forty years of service. And I think the community should be proud with what she's accomplished in her career. One of the things that, you know, in talking to Tim today, she was one of the first community paramedics in southeast Minnesota. That's saying something. I don't know, she started out as, as a volunteer and became director and now works as a, a paramedic, but for forty-four years has taken that role. It's, it's kind of, kind of astonishing. As Tim, Tim would say, she's treated thousands of patients, probably saved hundreds of lives. I think it's, it's something that the council should recognize, and, and I know she's going to do a great job out in Washington.
When I think of the ambulance department, when I think of Brenda, or Bee, or Bee as they call her, but she's, she's, she's it. Okay, a motion to approve that recognition, recognition.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Duncan, second by Gizmi to approve the employee recognition conference out in Washington. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, we'll get into reports. Kyle?
Thank you, and good evening to the council, the staff, and the community. I'm going to start out with thank yous that go to the Public Works Department and the Police Department, because they really set up the Easter hunt this year. We had all the barricades we needed, we had the cones that we needed, you know, everything just worked out so well. And I love the new barricades. They are so light, instead of those big, heavy ones, these are two cones with a bar that sits on top of them. Awesome. I'm very impressed that you found those. But yes, and Joe helped a lot on Saturday morning, helping get us set up, as well as just being back there and working with the traffic. I also want to do a shout out to the Staten Civil Air Patrol. They brought in six volunteers to actually do the traffic control on our two main intersections. And with all the construction, we definitely needed that extra protection. And so that was wonderful. They've also let me know that they'll do more events in Cannon Falls. We just have to give them notice. So that's a good thing. We did end up with about two hundred children participating on Saturday morning, and twenty-two businesses, from as far north as Ag Partners, down to Interstate Building Supplies. And so a very good turnout, and hopefully nobody got way too cold that day. All right. We do have a new person in Cannon Falls that is the Mindot Community Project Manager for the projects going on in Cannon Falls. His name is Bill Heinlein. He stops in the Cannon Falls, or the Chamber Office, two to three times a week, giving me any updates, should anybody come in and ask. Bill has also said that we can share his phone number, that if any citizen has any questions or concerns, he will take it back to Mindot and get the answers for them. And he's been doing very well at that for the last couple of weeks. So thank you, Bill. The next big event coming up is going to be the Spring Communitywide Garage Sale, put on by the Cannon Falls Beacon. And the deadline for garage sale ads is April twenty-eighth, which, you know, that's ten days away. It, I don't know where April went, but ten days away to be able to get your ad in the paper as well as your listing on the map. And Discover Guides. I shared our two thousand and twenty-two Discover Guides with the staff and the council members. We order, we actually upped our order in two thousand and twenty-two to five thousand seven hundred and fifty guides. However, we're already short. We've had more requests from Chambers, and larger quantities from the travel centers around the state of Minnesota. And we've also signed up to be with AAA Living, which, if you get the AAA Living Magazine, they have a little card in there, and you can circle the locations that you want more information. And then they send those directly to us, so it'll be interesting to see how many leads we get from that. That'll be a wonderful way to track that particular magazine and that ad. And so, yes, we've ordered another twelve hundred and fifty, just put it out today, and hopefully we'll have them by the end of the month. Any questions?
When is the citywide garage sale? What's the date of that?
May sixth and May seventh. That's a Friday, Saturday, May sixth and seventh. I have heard that Riverwood Community Church will be selling hot dogs during the garage sale. I'm not sure where yet, so be alert for hot dogs. Any other questions?
Thanks, Kyle.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for the call.
Okay, let's go through the committees. EDA, Laura's not here tonight.
I can handle that one.
Go ahead.
We extended the development agreement for Keller Bartman because they were scheduled to have their soil borings done by April twentieth, and they didn't have it scheduled, so that's been extended by six months. Carstensen Leasing.
Six weeks?
Six, did I say, six months, months. Carstensen Leasing, talked about the project going on up there in Industrial Park area. And other than that, it was an update from the Feast Expo that happened at the Grand O2 Center in March. And then possible businesses that are also interested in coming to Industrial Park. So for some leads for Laura, about it.
Okay. Public Works. Dan? Derek?
I'll take it.
Go ahead.
Most of the things were on the consent agenda, the equipment sale, utility trailer, and the utility locator. The only other thing we had was another water bill reduction request, so, and that was about it.
Okay. Park Board, Matt?
A lot of that stuff was also on the consent agenda tonight, but the hiring of the two thousand and two pool employees, the gaining of a pool lift, which is a good step in the right direction for ADA compliance, so that handicap people can, can use that lift. And then the fence and back stop upgrade at Archie Swenson Field on field number one, the fence to be put in, in conjunction with Public Works Department, they'll do some work there. And we really appreciate that the CFY is willing to put in half for that, so that they can play games there, because the backstop simply isn't high enough, and then the fences aren't safe on the dugouts, so that's an update that, that needs to happen. And then also the caulking in the pool, the seams.
Okay. Finance Committee.
We, we talked about the employee recognition and Bluff Drive here tonight and took care of that. Two other items, we may be updating our personnel policy slightly, depending on what our non-union employees decide on the healthcare savings plan, and adverse weather conditions and how we handle that.
Okay. Library Board. Nothing? Planning Commission.
We met on April eleventh, and I'm going to swing it over to Diane.
We had a request for rezone for PID five-two-five-three-zero-zero-two-zero and five-two-five-three-zero-zero-zero-one-zero. These are the properties previously owned by banks, now owned by Matt Feman. The request was to rezone from a UR Urban Reserve to a B2 Highway Business District. Other than that, we had a discussion, discussion item from the Darien regarding the possibility of expanding outdoor dining, possibility of parking layout change, and a possibility of food truck option at that location this summer. And that was it.
Very good. Let's go around, or Dan, anything else tonight?
We're still flushing water mains, just wanted to let everybody know we're still doing that, in case they notice any change in their water.
Okay, Bill?
Uh, nothing additional, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Diane?
No.
Jeff? Neil?
Still working on the audit, that'll be coming to you guys here in a month or so.
Okay. Derek? Mary Jo? Steve?
No.
Laura? Matt?
Just ask that everybody be patient with the Highway nineteen road project that's going on. Right where I live, that corner, there's still a lot of people that take that really fast, and those lanes are narrow right now, so be careful, especially as the weather, eventually will get better, motorcycles are going to be out. But specifically in the morning, school, it's, it's, it's rough, rougher than normal. Downtown, the four-way stop, personally, I haven't had any real problems, I've seen some people have complained about people rolling through, and lucky there hasn't been an accident yet, and chief is, as far as I know, there hasn't been, but some people even prefer it compared to the light, but just take your time, you'll still get there, be safe. That's all I got.
Hey, Phil?
Uh, yeah, I think it was a couple meetings, or maybe it was a previous meeting, I can't remember, we had a public hearing on garbage and recycling. I think we need to set up before our next council meeting, a work session so the council can decide things that they want to see possibly in it, or however the council wants to move forward on that.
Could we ask that?
I don't know what you were going to say.
City Attorney. Be here with us.
Sarah.
Because there's a couple options that we could explore, and I think she would be.
That would be, that would be good.
That would be helpful.
Sarah.
Sarah.
So work session at five o'clock before our next council meeting?
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Okay. Okay. I have one thing, got a call from a couple baseball moms, if it's all right to put the photos of the bomber baseball seniors on the fence down there by the man shell? They've done it the previous years, and I don't think they've asked, but they did ask this year.
They, they did ask that.
They did ask that first year because of COVID, they asked if they could put the seniors' pictures on the outside fence, so they.
They asked now if it could, and I said I didn't see any problem with it, unless there's an objection here.
No, I, I actually didn't know that they asked.
Yeah, I think it's nice, too. So I'll just let them go. Okay, the only other thing, the only meeting that's coming up before our next council meeting is the Joint Powers Trail Board on April twenty-sixth. That's the only meeting before our next council meeting. Okay, anything else from anybody? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Bringle, second by Lundell to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.